It's seven o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
Sure, Calhoun.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Pullen.
Yes.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Con.
Here.
Okay, we will get started with our community events. As you can see, a lot of things have been added to that this week. This Saturday is Millersburg Garage Sale Day. I've been getting a lot of questions about garage sales. No, you do not have to pay. No, you do not have to register. Just enjoy having your garage sale. June 4th is Outback Raze: Amazing Animal Show at the library at 1:00. That's free for families. June 8th is kind of a big day. We have our village cleanup and shredding at the street department from 9:00 to noon. There's also the golf outing to benefit Rails to Trails. I'm sorry. A benefit auction to benefit Rails to Trails. That is June 8th. The auction begins at 9:30. Breakfast is at 7:00. So go out for 7:00, go out at 7:00 for breakfast and stay for the auction. June 13th is exploring food from other cultures at the library. That's for adults and teens, and you do need to register for that. That's at 3:00. June 17th is space adventure for families, free at the library at 11:00. And June 27th is child's homesteading at the library, and that's free for families at 11:00 as well. The bicentennial information. I have composed a letter. I was asked by our leader, our fearless leader, to send out invitations to invite mayors and township trustees. After the parade on June 29th, probably around 3:00, there's going to be speeches given by state and county elected officials in the common police courtroom on the third floor. After those speeches, there will be a picture taken of elected officials on the courthouse steps. So if any of you would like to be there for that, to be in that picture, that would be great. The other exciting thing that I have is a proclamation to read. And I will go ahead and do that. "I have a proclamation honoring Betty Pyer. Whereas Betty Pyer was born on May 31st, 1924, and will be celebrating her 100th birthday this year. And whereas, the village of Millersburg recognizes Betty Pyer for her longevity of life and her lifelong commitment to family, friends, and community. And whereas, in consideration of Betty Pyer's longevity of life, representing a century of experiences, growth, and changes, I, Mayor Kelly Hoffey congratulate her on her 100th birthday. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kelly Hoffey, mayor of the village of Millersburg in the state of Ohio, on behalf of the mayor and council and residents of the village of Millersburg, do hereby recognize and extend to Betty Pyer our sincerest congratulations on achieving this milestone in life and further wish her all the best and continued health and happiness in the years to come. Happy birthday, Betty." Do we have any visitors that wish to address council at this time? Would you like to?
Yes.
Can you just tell us your name?
Yes, so my name's Ashley Vaughn. I am here representing the Commercial and Savings Bank. I'm our senior operations officer. And we would like to host a community party at our offices and use the village lot that's to the south of our operations building, so off of North Clay Street, on August 17th. So I want to give you a little bit of context about what that means and what really the ask is from the village council. So we have been celebrating, I would say, milestone anniversaries at a variety of our locations over the past several years. This year happens to be the 25th anniversary of our operations building, and so we'd like to host a community party for that specific purpose. What that means is that we bring in tents and tables and chairs that we would set up in the parking lot, bounce houses, face painting, balloon art, food, ice cream activities, and invite anyone in the community to come and celebrate with us. So we would really love to use the village lot to the south of our building because that would allow people to not have to cross the street back and forth across Clay Street to be able to come and enjoy those activities. The first floor of our operations building will be open as well, which we are actively renovating too, and we'd love to invite people in and come see that space. So what that would mean from a setup perspective is that tents, tables, chairs, all of that would have to be set up on Friday, the 16th, and then would not be able to be torn down until Monday, the 19th. So I guess the ask is really whether or not we'd be able to utilize that parking lot really from August 16th through August 19th for the purpose of that community party. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that as well.
I have one question. With the tent, they wouldn't be pounding stakes into the parking lot, would they?
No, they would not. No, we would have them actually bring out some of the concrete blocks that would tie the tent and everything down.
What time is your party?
It is August 17th from 1:00 to 4:00, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Does that take parking away from the American Hall? I mean, like, if anybody else would be using, having anything that weekend, does that take away parking?
Potentially. Would they have the option, if needed, to go across the street and use your other lot?
Absolutely, yeah. But I mean, that parking would be good.
For that weekend?
Yeah.
You guys use that lot the most, as it is, so I would think there should be some across the road doing.
CSB throws a really neat community party, too, from my experience. I think it's, I think it's fine. I don't have a problem with it emotionally.
Yeah, we should have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of that.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Con.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Pullen.
Aye.
And Hofstadter.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're excited about that. That's exciting. Okay. Do we have a motion to suspend the minutes of the meeting, of the previous meeting? Pullen.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second. Con.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Pullen.
Aye.
Okay, we have Bill Resolution 2024-12. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $336,410.06? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to pay?
I'll make a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Pullen.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
Okay, neat.
All right. First up, designer view board will meet on June 5th next week, Wednesday at 6:00. I've got a COA application from Wayne Savings. Soon to be, or is already, Main Street Bank. They were bought out. 90 North Clay, so they're changing out the assigned faces on all their existing signage. And this is, I guess, sort of a temporary deal until they arrive at a permanent design, then they'll come back for whatever they opt to do at that time. Planning and zoning is also going to meet on the 5th at 6:30. We've got a variance application from JH Company, which is Tobacco Hut, at 8:15 South Washington Street for setback variance request and as use of a freight container as a storage building. So that'll be at 6:30. Also, Dave Kreider came in today and told me because of some upcoming commitments and new commitments, he has to resign from planning and zoning. So we'd like a motion to accept that resignation, and then we'll also be taking anybody that's interested in sitting on that committee or that board. We'll take letters of interest or just get us your name. Doesn't have to be a full-blown letter.
I'll make the motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Pullen.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
The cemetery resurfacing is all done. ADP was supposed to be beginning on the pole relocation work at Worcester Road and Jones Street this week sometime. Depends on weather with them all the time. If they get a bunch of storm callouts, it pushes their regular routine work back. Hopefully, we'll get that done soon so then we can go in and change the intersection, get that island removed. And then we've also got, on the schedule with pavement technologies, we're going to try a reclamation treatment. We've talked about it a few years. Never actually done it. It's a surface treatment on existing pavement. You can do it on new to five-year-old pavement. It rejuvenates the asphalt within the pavement and helps seal the surface so you don't get water damage, ravelling, and cracking. So we're going to do it on the streets I've listed, North and South Med Anthony Grant, Adam Smith, Newton Ingle Deeds, and the cemetery. Try that out and see what it does. And I'll just warn people now, when they apply it, it's pink. It'll look pink for a little while, and then as that soaks in, you get back to your black asphalt. Pavement markings will be a little bit blurred, but they're, they've told me, I asked specifically about that, they're still visible. It's just, I think the pink throws everybody off for that 24 hours or whatever it takes to cure, so.
Neat. How is that put down? Is that a spray?
It's a spray. Yeah, they come out and sweep the street and spray it. And then they actually put some fine aggregate on, on top of that, and then sweep again. Supposed to be a pretty in, pretty easy in and out. It's not very disruptive, from what I've been told. Worcester's done a fair amount of this. Pat and I went up two years ago and looked at a couple of the streets they had done in different stages, and you can definitely tell the difference with the porosity of the surface. The treated surfaces are much more closed than streets that are untreated.
That doesn't cause any kind of traction issues in the winter, if it's smoother?
Not that I'm aware of, no. So new asphalt, very tight. This wouldn't be going beyond what new asphalt is, so it shouldn't cause any traction issues.
I was up at the cemetery Friday or Saturday, and I was parked, and Bubba Miller came up to me and he said, "You gotta watch, because there was sinkholes in the new asphalt."
Yeah, somebody, somebody parked right on the hill on one of those really hot days, and when they went to take off, they dug in. You can't have anything nice. It's a little frustrating. Well, the frustrating part is, it was at a place where if they would've just gone on up the hill and turned, they would've been the same distance away and would've been on a flat section to park instead of parking right on the hill. But so goes. Job security, I guess. Street Department, we did receive the sealed approved bids, or plans, not bids, plans for the new building, the storage building out there. So Pat and I, excuse me, are working on getting quotes from contractors on that. And I don't have any other updates, other than still expecting a September delivery on the wheel loader. The airport park projects, who talked about, gave Premier Fence the okay to go ahead with the backstop replacement. And Vasco's, we're now on their schedule for the two, two pickleball court conversion that we previously talked about. That's the full, full deal with the nets and fencing, striping, lining, everything. Pat and I are still looking at dugouts and just trying to work in, move in the bleachers. When their schedule allows for, we'll do that in-house. Some exciting news. We've got, so this came, I apologize for not letting you know about this sooner, but Arnie Oliver from the Holmes County Planning Commission had called me about a week and a half ago and said the CDBG application deadline was coming up, and they didn't have any applicants at that time. He hadn't seen anything. He said, "What do you think about throwing together a sidewalk project, replace some downtown sidewalks?" I said, "Yeah, let's try it." So he did the bulk of the work on it. I helped him with some things, of course. We literally threw it together and submitted it, and then found out last week that the commissioners awarded us the full allocation. So we've got $136,400 going towards sidewalk replacement next year. Our share of that is 4382, so really good leveraging there. But Arnie had another idea. He said, "What if we try to leverage these funds with an ARC application to virtually double what we're going to be doing?" I said, "Ah, there's no harm in trying." So if successful, if the ARC project is, or application is successful, we would likely commit our full sidewalk allocation or appropriation for next year towards that project. So we'd be doing a pretty big downtown sidewalk project. And one of the things that I specifically asked for was, even if we can't get lights up right now, let's run the conduit west from here, so we have power down at this end of town so we can come back and put lights in without tearing up new sidewalk. So hopefully, we'll get that all, get the ARC funding. We can definitely do a lot of good.
Is there any vision of what that downtown project would look like?
So we're going to start down at this end with, with the replacements. It'll focus on these two blocks. And then if, if successful, we'll work our way east.
So would the trees come out?
Would, well.
Would that change the landscaping of?
Yeah, I mean, everything, the existing sidewalks would come out. This is full sidewalk and curb. We'd have the option to, to remove the trees, which has been talked about. Or leave, leave them, or remove them and leave planter areas. You know, we have some options there. So we'll have to discuss that a little further when it comes to design time. The other thing I have, the Holmes County CIC has the opportunity to acquire the former Terrace View property. We're, we're a member of the county CIC. I sit on that board. So we had a meeting last week. So what happened was R&amp;D and Innovation LLC is a company that acquired that property from Gateway Church. They had plans. They'd come in, they got a rezoned, they had begun some work, and then unfortunately, their owner passed away midstream. So the estate, I, I don't know all the details, but they want to just unload it. They're not, they're willing to give it to the Holmes County CIC. They want to see it go towards some community project of some sort. So we got together and talked. You can pass this around. Kelly had actually provided this out of, was it Michael Mas?
Yep.
Had come up with that out of one of your business housing committee meetings. And it's funny, we, we've met the same day that you guys met, and we had the exact same thought, but that really lends itself towards a residential development. So the thought is the CIC could acquire the property and hold it like a land bank. The county has access to brownfield money, which is, if there's any contamination found on that site, we can use that money to demolish the existing building, which is really the problem with that property, is the building. So ideally, this is probably the only time you'll ever hear me say this, let's hope they find some sort of contamination so we can get that brownfield money utilized and end up with a vacant five acres right in the middle of town with utilities already and a residential neighborhood. There's, if you look at single-family lots, like is proposed on that dra, on that drawing there, it's 26 lots?
26 lots.
26.
We talked, if you look at condo development cluster, you could probably be pushing closer to 40, depending on layouts and everything. It's terraced already, so you could have some walkouts, some, some different levels. There's a lot of potential there. The problem, the CIC isn't a full, isn't fully a county entity or a public entity, so they'd still be subject to property taxes. Current property taxes are like $11,000 a year, or a year or half. I mean, it's pretty high.
A year.
Yeah, $11,000 a year. So there'd be some money involved. There'd, you'd have the property taxes, you'd have transfers, you know, real estate transfer. There'd be a couple thousand dollars there. You'd have to have insurance on it. And then some maintenance money for mowing periodically. Don't really need to worry about snow removal. But there, you'd definitely have to keep it mowed this time of year. So what we came up with is, they've approached, Arnie and Mark Lining are approached the commissioners about potentially contributing money towards the CI, the CIC has no money. I should say that again, $100. So the ask is, would, would the village and the county be willing to split covering the fees for the property taxes, et cetera, until that project, ideally, you know, the property's torn down, then we can go out to developers and say, "Give us a proposal on what you do with this, get it in their hands for next to nothing." It's a win-win. You know, there's, there's a lot of potential there to, to take the unused five acres and provide housing or something here in town. So the numbers we're kicking around, I think, you know, for, I, I don't know. We don't know exact, we know the, the tax amount. I don't know what insurance is going to be, maintenance, that kind of thing. So we were thinking, if, if we'd each agree 12,000 to 15,000, up to 12,000 to 15,000 a year to, towards this, is that something we'd entertain?
Does there have to be a line item in the budget for that, or does it just come out in general? How does that work?
We'd have to find an appropriate fund to take it from. I don't know where that is, right off the top of my head, but community development of some sort, or, you know, I'm sure we could find something appropriate for it.
The other thing we want to do is go to the auditor's office, because they believe that, that, right now, that, that piece of land and property is worth $600,000. I, I, I find that very hard to believe, and so I, I would like to ask them.
What's the property tax on it right now? What's it, that, is that what they're?
That's what it's valued at. That's what they're valuing it at right now.
As a working nursing home, okay, that probably makes sense, but it's not been.
But it's not.
It had been nursing homes since when?
However many years, and nobody appealed it.
Right.
So there's a process to go in and appeal the valuation. That's why I don't know exactly what I'm asking for. I, I think up to a certain amount would be appropriate with the thought that the taxes would be lowered.
Any idea how quickly we'd get the results of the brownfield analysis stuff back?
Yeah, it would be relatively quick. Those have to be, it would be very soon, like June, July, we, we should know. And the, the estate wants to close this thing quick. They want to get, they're trying to wrap things up.
What was their intent? The guy that died, to do with it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I might have glanced over that, glazed over that, whatever. Their original plan was to put in, they'd gotten zoning approval to rezonate to special use district for post-secondary education.
That's right.
Vocational-type training, rehab, not, I don't want to say rehab, but it was, it was associated with rehab as providing an educational campus for them to go work, work, learn a trade, or learn whatever.
Adult education.
They offer adult education, yeah. It was kind of a mix of things. They told, you know, they had a huge kitchen in it. They talked about some kind of culinary classes, and then you'd have, you know, all those rooms available for, that could be like classes. There's a lot of opportunity there, but unfortunately, they put some money into it. They did some roof work. They did some utility work inside the building, and then unfortunately, he passed away. So just didn't work out.
Was he a local person, or?
No, they were out of West, it's, I'm not sure if it says on there, Columbus area. It was somewhere around Columbus.
Says he runs street on Davis. I would think that the insurance coverage on that would be quite a bit cheaper once the building was torn down. So the sooner that can be done, the better. I, I think it's an opportunity for growth in the village, and I think we need to jump on it, so.
I think it would be good to, if this does happen, is attractive nuisance the right term, as it sits right now? I think it'd be wise for us in the county to go in and board it up, secure the building itself, because there's, I think there's a fair amount of vandalism goes on there from driving around, looking at it, and being in it a few years ago. When they, they bought it, we walked through with them. There, there'd been some visitors. But yes, certainly, with no building there, I think the insurance rates would be much more reasonable.
We keep talking about housing. This is an opportunity.
Absolutely.
It's a great opportunity.
Oh, and the other, I, I keep thinking about stuff. I had also talked to the board and Kelly a little bit. If we could take maybe the back half an acre or so, that might be a really good spot for us to have a composting location. If we could find a corner that's not real visible, and we could fence it and screen it, that would give us a good location to, to have our composting facility that's not in a floodplain, easily accessible, but we can secure it. And they, they thought it was a great idea.
Something that we needed for a long time.
This time of year, it seems like we're getting a lot of calls about, "Where do I take my brush? Where do I take my clippings?", whatever.
What does the motion need to involve?
I think authorizing up to a certain dollar amount per year. You can put a limit on the amount, the years. I don't want to, it would almost be a reimbursement-type thing that we'd pay as needed, not just cut the CIC a check at the beginning of the year. So I think we could word it a little more loosely than saying we're going to give X amount.
And the county commissioners have already committed?
Verbally, yes. Yeah, they haven't passed anything officially yet, but.
And plus, if we can get the real estate value down, too.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta get that down.
Yeah, that money'd be a lot less.
Yeah.
Should we talk in $12,000?
I'm sure. I don't know, I don't know what. I think that should be sufficient, considering the property taxes should very likely be reduced drastically. I think that should be.
Especially with it coming down, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the insurance on the building right now? Do we know?
I don't know. I have no idea what commercial insurance rates are. I, I wouldn't have a clue on something like that.
But it's not like it's occupied either in the end. I don't want to say if it burns down. I'm fine with the motion to find $12,000 to partner with the commissioners to move forward with this project, and if we need to advance additional year, whatever, we'll come back and do that.
I'll second it.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Pullen. Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
And if I'm, I guess it depends on how the closing. Likely wouldn't need it till next year. I'm, I guess, you know, it all depends on how it's operated.
How quick that closes.
Yeah. So, yeah, probably be after the first of the year anyways.
It's going to be reevaluated before then.
Yeah. Because I think you have
It's torn down.
Till March, March sometime to appeal for the previous. So we'd be appealing for the current year, which would be next year. So, yeah. I believe that's all I have, I think.
We may come back. That's all.
I'll let you know if not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Captain. All right, thank you so much. Bobby.
All right, um, I've emailed out, and somebody have some printed copies of a very rough draft of the budget that I've been working on. Are there any questions about what you're seeing? Again, very preliminary numbers, but does anything stand out that you have questions about? I'll have an even better draft next visit. And then we have our budget hearing in July, and we'll need to pass it, and it's due to the auditor by the 18th of July. That's all for me.
All right, thank you. Op?
Thank you. Want to talk a little bit about streets and alleys. As far as streets go, I talked to David Hoffman today. He will have a letter to us before the next meeting, so we'll have some things to discuss about the speed limit issue. The alleys, the ordinance is prepared. I gave it to Bobby this evening, and we'll have the first reading next. And we'll have the first reading next, uh, meeting with a public hearing. And so three readings and then that project will be put to bed, so. It's been, that's been a long project, it's been two years, maybe even three, whatever, but it's been, it's been a while. So, but, we're closing eleven alleys, so that's, that's a good thing. That's it.
All right, thank you. Um, upcoming committee meetings. We have June fifth, design review board at six and planning and zoning at six thirty. Um, at, before the next meeting, we have two public hearings, I believe we have one at six thirty and one at six forty-five. So that will be on June tenth before the next council meeting. Um, and June tenth will be our June council meeting. Um, business and housing will meet June twelfth at six. So, that's what we have for the upcoming committee meetings. Do we have any committee reports?
Uh, last, last Wednesday, the Tree City Group met and did some mulching down at the South Y on South Place Street. As well as out at Jackson Street Extension, so.
That's awesome, thank you very much. That's wonderful. Um, we have legislation tonight, our first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero three by title only. An ordinance to authorize the sale of municipal tangential, tangible personal property through the internet. Are there any questions?
The scoreboards, where are those from, from what?
Those are from Deer Run, there was two old ones there that were replaced. Talked to the elementary school and they didn't want them, so.
Cause the one, is that baseball?
Yes.
Cause the one, if the one doesn't work at, at airport park, can't we use one of those?
These don't work.
What's that?
These don't work either, that's why they're all replaced from Deer Run.
Any other questions?
You could have a scoreboard in your living room if you want.
Bigger than my living room.
Okay, old business, does anyone have any old business?
I don't know if you wanna consider this old business or new business, but with the bicentennial parade. I've thought about this a lot and I think we should have our own float. And not have all the county officials on one, that we should be separate. We're two hundred years old, the county's two hundred, difference of a year, whatever.
We've always committed to being on the float.
We have to be.
I?
You need to know who's coming on the float, right?
I.
For June twenty-nine.
Yeah. There's a float for elected officials that the bicentennial committee is paying for. The floats are nine hundred dollars apiece, and the bicentennial is paying for seven?
Well, we are going to re, reevaluate.
Reevaluate that?
Yeah, but we'll, we'll have one in like the big ones. There's a company out of.
New Philly.
Is it Philly or Shreve Creek? I always give them all that stuff.
It's New Philly.
That they decorate it for you and all you have to do is have a truck. It's fabulous, we picked our decorations last meeting. Um, but, yeah, it, so it'll be like an actual float, so if y'all wanna get your own, it's. Nine hundred bucks to have them design it or you can do your own and do your own thing, but.
So Bob, are you paying for this?
We're gonna win the lottery tonight, no problem.
I'll give you a registration sheet, Bob.
Wouldn't we have some discretionary funds for that?
I doubt it.
They don't have a float on them.
Bobby can do it.
Bobby's shaking your head no. Wish I could say yes.
I'm wondering if there, has there been a commitment from village council? Have you, have you had names that have committed to being on this?
The only one that I've heard for sure that's going to be on the float is Andrea.
I'll be on float, yeah.
Bob, are you gonna be on it, cause you're advocating for your own float?
Our own float, yes.
Maybe we could all sit together.
We should be able to all sit together.
If you have, you know, the clerks from each township and all these people.
It's only for elected officials.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we're not talking like clerks and.
No.
But they are elected.
Well, yeah, but we're talking like your leaders.
Well, you've got the mayor from Holmesville, Nashville.
And every town has their option to have their own float, like I was speaking, I happened to see the people, the folks from Nashville, cause they were at the board of education meeting. And so I said, Mayor Hoffy's gonna be reaching out to you, but here's a little preview of coming attractions. And, um, so they're trying to decide that they wanna, because not everybody's gonna have a whole group that'll be able to be available, so. And not everybody's gonna want to be on a float, not every elected official in this county is. In favor of being the center of attention there like that, so, um, I don't think. You're gonna have quite as many as you think, but every town has the opportunity. Cause, I, I asked Mayor Hoffy to send everybody registration, so if they wanted to do their own, they're welcome to, I just need to know who's coming to. The three o'clock thing in the courtroom, so I can recognize everybody. You won't get a chance to speak, but I'm able to recognize. Those elected officials that are in, in-house, and then everybody can catch the historical video.
How's everybody else feel? I've, you know, expressed how I feel about it.
I think it's important for the village, um, village council elected officials to be a part of this parade. If, if it works in your schedule, it's, it's a two hundred year anniversary. And I, I think, I think it's a good idea, I think we should rally behind the good idea and, and show ourselves on the float. If it would be, you know, year after year to be in a parade, I, I probably wouldn't feel that way, but. I think it's a special time of, of, uh, the, the celebration of Holmes County and. If, uh, if you can participate in it, I think you should. Um, yeah, I think the presence part of it is, is important. I don't know that, that having our own float is something that we need to do. And that's an expense too, that we have to pay for on our own, so, but.
Always run the back of a pickup if you want to, put a sign off the edge, you don't have to have the expensive fancy float. Everybody's allowed to do what they want. You can have a myriad of horses, I was gonna say, but I'm not gonna say that.
But the elected officials picture that you're, you're talking about, that's gonna be on the courthouse? What's that?
Like you want it on the stairs.
Well, but this is for the entire county, so this is for all the villages, all the elected officials, it's, okay. So it's a little bit different than the, yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna do pictures that.
We still can't figure out who the people are in the picture, so.
They all, you know, it's what we hand off.
Okay, well, we have another council meeting, so think about it. If you're interested in doing that, check it out, okay? Anybody else, old business?
I guess this is probably kind of old, kind of new. Uh, at the last meeting Nate had talked about the, the Lions Club and the. The Legion and the Eagles putting up a flagpole, uh, down at the South Y. And, uh, Dale Obringer, the president of the Lions Club, asked me if the village would have. Anything that we could contribute to that project, and I talked to Nate about it, and, and he said he would feel comfortable with council's approval. Uh, offering to extend, to pay for the extending the electricity to that part, which would. Be somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand to maybe fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so I wanted to see discussion if you guys were in favor of, of us contributing that to the project. I guess I'm looking at it as they're improving our, our piece of property, so it'd be nice to give them something for it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay?
I don't either.
Okay, any other discussion? Somebody like to make a motion to cover that?
Holden?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Yes, yeah.
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Thank you guys.
That's great.
Kelly, you're talking about old business here and, you know, I, I wanted to acknowledge, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Um, not, not to pat, you know, ourselves in the back or anything, but a number of us actually swept the streets. Here a couple of weeks ago, and that's a big improvement. Uh, removing old mulch from, from trees that were in front of businesses, um, removing bricks, resetting bricks.
Yeah, I was sore for a week.
Me too, I couldn't hardly walk the next day.
Yeah, I thought I was twenty-nine.
There are a number of us that have often said in, in these meetings, you know, we're not beyond getting out there and working. And we've done that, I enjoyed that, I wish I would've had more time on that day to do it, but, um, I thought it was a great thing. And I don't have a problem doing that in the future, it was a much needed thing. I think the businesses, they appreciated it, some of them came out and said, I heard them come up to you Kelly and say, hey, thank you for doing this. So, um, just a little acknowledgement that that happened and, um, I thought it was a neat thing, so.
That was a neat thing, that's on my list too. I have, these are the people who helped us, Clara, Taylor. Tom, Brad, Andrea and Dan Miller, thank you all for your help. We, every single one of us who was there was needed.
Yeah.
And yeah, it was, it was hard work, but it does look beautiful, and we had a lot of business owners that were so grateful for that. Um, also, thank you to the Lions Club, the veterans banners look wonderful.
They do.
I'm especially fond of the one right beside the Court Street sign, uh, but. They, they look wonderful. Let me see who else I have, um, to all the residents who have reached out about streetlights being out. A E, A E P has been notified and they will be fixed soon, so that was, that was a good thing too. We had a lot of them.
We had a rash of them.
Yeah, huge, huge amount of them. Um, I went to the new mayor training, which was the very first ever new mayor training. Um, and there were a lot of us there, um, some things we talked about were budgets and funds and how those all work. Public meeting rules, record retention rules, ethics and conflict of interest. Um, I had some great conversations with a lot of other mayors, a lot of mayors. Um, but the cool, the one cool thing that I thought that might interest council, um, there's this. There's this program called the Mount Vernon Project, um, and it, the, it's a training, it's online. So you can do it from home, um, it's for public officials, um, it, it touches on six core areas. The structure of local and state government, constituent relations, ethics, government finance, civility and public records. Um, so, I just think that it would be really interesting, I'm going to do it. Um, you can get, it's on the Ohio Attorney General site, it's ohioattorneygeneral.gov slash the Mount Vernon Project. Um, so, aside from current elected officials. Um, if you're thinking about running for office or just interested in government, that might be a cool thing to do. So, I just wanted to let you guys know about that. Any other old business? New business?
So I wanted to address, last meeting I talked about the parking cluster in front of the post office. Well, it came to my attention in the last week that I wanna re, you know, remind the community. We have two driving lanes on South Washington Street, that middle lane is not a passing lane. So in a week's time, I had, I was behind a car that passed, went into the middle turn lane. To pass another car in front of Dollar General, and then on Saturday I had a motorcycle pass me. And that is not, I don't understand the driving in this village, but there are not three lanes, that's a turn lane. That does not mean you come up, somebody's going slow and you go in front of them, so I just wanna remind everybody that. I, I don't, I don't know where people are going to get their driving thing, but that is not, it's not how you drive, it's not safe.
Yeah.
So I wanna remind people of that, we have two, that's a, those are turn lanes.
Yeah. I had, um, a discussion with Karen from Starlight Antiques. Um, all of the businesses on that northwest block of the square, um, Starlight Antiques. Jackson Street Antiques, Urban Farm Girl La Palma, they are all having garage sales behind their building in that alley on Saturday. And they would like the alley closed from nine to four this Saturday, so that they can do, put all of their stuff out there and not have to worry about that.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Kelly?
Yes.
Holden? Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Thank you.
If, if we get other requests, I'm just thinking if other businesses that aren't in that block. Are you okay if we go ahead and close them if it suits every, all the other businesses in that block?
I had actually said something during, during the antiques in the out, or vintage in the bird. They were gonna do that, they had that one alley behind, so I think they were planning on doing that again for that alley. They were gonna pull stuff out of there.
I'm just thinking if they, others hear about it, they might wanna do it too.
Yeah.
Is that okay to just kinda leave it at our discretion?
Make another motion?
I'm sorry, yeah, you could just amend it to.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna, yeah, amend the motion to other alleys, alleys, right, just.
Yes, alleys. Right. Thank you very much. Um, also, Taylor contacted me today, she wanted to come, but she had a. Meeting tonight. H D M would like to shut down South Monroe to Court Street and all of Court Street for Thunder over Holmes County. On June twenty-ninth.
I'll make the motion to do so.
I'll second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Holden?
Hi.
And Con?
Aye.
Okay, then we had two other things to talk about, do you wanna talk about the markings and all over town and what they're for?
Oh, so, yeah, Bright Speed is doing a, a big build out of their fiber network all over. It goes beyond town even, but a lot of it's in town, so what they're doing now is a lot of the crossings. They're putting the conduit in for street crossings and then they're gonna come back and pull cable. Um, they've been like a swarm of ants all over the, the whole village the last few weeks, so. Got a lot of calls about that. There's also, they're also doing some pole work, pole replacements simultaneously, so. A lot of utility work going on right now.
I also got a phone call from Randy from Northeast Ohio Gas, he said this summer. They are going to be replacing a bunch of gas meters here in the village. Um, and they said, he said before they hook the gas back up, they will be doing a pressure test. Which is what you talked about, um, before, so if there are any leaks, those will need to be fixed before the gas line is reconnected. Um, the nice thing is it's summertime, so unless you have a gas stove or a gas dryer. Gas hot water heater, um, you have a little bit of time, it's not like it's gonna be negative ten out or freezing cold and.
Are they gonna get noticed? So what I went through is, before the, what I suggested back when I went through this. Is that when people know that's gonna happen, especially in an old home, and those are gonna be the old homes that they're gonna be putting the new meters on.
Right.
Is they really need to have, if it's, whatever, to come in and make sure, so that when they do the reconnect.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to try and see if we can get a timeline of where, because the problem is going to be. Getting a plumber in.
Yes.
That's going to be the problem, because.
Some of them are a month, so.
They're, they're out very far, that is, that is correct.
Yeah, they're out about a month.
Yeah, yeah, so that is going to be the issue.
It's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try and get that list so that we know, so that we can let people know that that is coming in their area.
Very good.
Okay, anyone else have any new business?
I guess I'll kinda piggyback off of that while we're talking about it to further compound things. On the budget that was out there, one of the big question marks is the resurfacing. In my mind, it's a big question mark, we, we know Northeast is gonna be doing a lot of work in town over the next, what'd they say, ten years? I really don't wanna go in and resurface a street for them to come behind us and replace mains and service lines. That's silly, it's a waste of money. That's silly, it's a wasted money, so I'd like to hopefully have some kind of a. Plan from them and I, I understand emergencies happen and you have to respond to those, but if, if we could be on the same page. With them to follow them and also couple that with the lead service line work that we're currently working on. The EPA mandated all, all lead service lines have to be identified and replaced over the next three to five years, whatever the time, I don't even, it's changed so many times. I couldn't begin to tell you. That's, I guess I'm pointing at a lot to say that those streets that we listed, the, what I said to Bobby, I had a big question mark with. I don't wanna do any of these till we know what these other two projects are gonna look like, so there may be virtually nothing next year. I, I don't think it's wise to be paving something if we know it's gonna be torn up, so we may have to step back a little bit, let them get ahead of us and then.
Go behind.
Fortunately, I think timing is good, we, we've just recently finished resurfacing everything in town, so we've got some moveable room there. Just one more thing to be thinking about.
Nobody wants another Clay Street cavern.
Right.
Nobody wants that. Great, great, okay, do we have any visitors which should address council? All right, anything for executive session?
Legislation.
What's that?
Legislation.
I already read that.
Do we need that?
Yep, I read that.
Don't mind me.
All right, here in none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Pullen?
Hi.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kellawg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Con.
Con.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much for coming, everyone, have a wonderful.